Continue that. Thanks, Adam. So we're on agenda item number two and we do not yet have the minutes, so we'll consider this. We would need a motion to continue approval of the minutes.
I'd like to motion to approve for continue item number two approval of due 21.
I have a motion and I have a queue for a second in line.
Yes, second.
Okay, all those in favor, please give us a sign, aye?
Aye.
Any opposed, any abstaining? Okay, likewise, we have now agenda item number two public hearing for case number 05RC 2021, state virus, state PDV. Adam, give us a little bit of an update of where we are in this case.
Sure, for those of you that are in the audience, this particular item, it did go to town council for first reading. I want to get council's feedback and of course intend just to have the public hearing here tonight. But there were a few items that the developer wanted to go over with staff in some more detail to try to iron those out. So it won't be heard tonight, it'll be continued to the August 31st meeting at 6:30 a.m. So sorry if you attended, we had gotten the word out on Facebook that it was kind of a last minute request by the developer, but certainly please come back next month or if you have any comments, feel free to email me. And you can always get that to the planning commission members.
And then, Adam, as always, thank you for handling those details and making sure that those items coming before us are primed for review. And for those of you who are here for the buyers, feel free to believe or you can say whatever you want. We do need to have an official motion to continue. And a second, if you'd like to make a motion.
Make a motion to continue public hearing case number 05RC 21, by our state PDV.
Okay, is there a second? All second, any discussion? All those in favor, please give us a sign, aye?
Aye.
Any opposed, any abstaining? Okay, we are continued for the agenda item number three, which means if you're on to agenda item number four, public hearing for case number 01ARCH 2021, which is for Mazzy's Pizza Architectural Review. Adam, can you get this off?
Sure, can.
Click on it, Adam.
Yeah.
Click back on the main zoom that you used to get. Yeah, click on that number.
Okay, there we go. All right, so for the record, I'm Adam Zach, the director for the town. This item before you tonight is Mazzy's Pizza.
Sorry, looks like Brad's driving back there.
Thank you. This particular item is from Mazzy's Pizza Architectural Review. There we go. So the applicant, the Dixon Construction Group, is seeking architectural approval for substantial front facade repairs to 23 South Main Street. The building owner is Christina Clifton. And the project mainly involves removing wood siding and exposing the brick, the historic brick, and adding a new awning. So there's also a protruding air conditioning unit which would be removed as well. And this project is 100% privately funded, so there's no government funding on this. So just to give you a quick overview, specifically what they're looking to do is they would remove the existing sign, they'd refurbish it, and then reinstall it back on the building. They would remove the awning completely that's there today. And they would remove the wood siding that's in place to expose that historic brick. They'd also replace the front door. They would re-repair that brick as needed, that's underneath the wood. And they would install a new metal awning, which would be basically some metal awning that's similar to what you see on Axeman Building. It would be hanging in a horizontal fashion, kind of like you see here on the drawing. And then, as I mentioned, they've replaced the door and then matched the window. So simply put, for this, typical review items on architecture for the zoning ordinance, basically in the Broadway Main design standards, it says if there's, if there's any alterations to the front of the building in the district that should be reviewed by, it used to be the designer board and now it's the planning commission, so we've carried that forward. And there is a bit of a judgment call there. I mean, frankly, if somebody's usually just doing simple repairs or if they're doing paint, you know, we don't require it before this body, but in this particular case, just there. Just there on the side of caution, we might have a chance to look at and weigh in on it, but in terms of the materials, they are utilizing the historic brick facade, and of course, that's an allowed material. And it would return the building to historic and historic aesthetic. And adding that metal awning similar to Taxman, that's acceptable and that's also prescribed by ordinance. In terms of community response on this project, we haven't received many letters of remonstrance. In fact, we did receive a letter of support from Steve Schneider, who's the adjacent building owner. So with that, we would, staff would recommend the, that you approve the request. The architectural changes outlined in the scope of this submittal subject to the following conditions, which is more or less a reminder for the applicant that the new awning shall require a right-of-way encroachment permit and shall have sufficient clearance from the ground per the zoning ordinance. I want to say it's about eight feet. We'll double check that when the encroachment permit comes in. So with that, if you have any questions, I'd be more than happy to discuss that on the applicants here as well.
Any questions, Brad?
So the air conditioning is going to be removed under, under the windows, that's going to be replaced with brick of like kind?
That's my understanding.
I think I have the others.
Come on up, yeah, come on up. We'll go ahead and state your name for the record and we'll start your time as well.
Matt Dixon, Dixon Construction Group. There's the building owner that has been coming in and helping with this. He's got a pretty tight budget of, he's only allowing about $30,000 to do this whole thing. So when we demo everything, we don't know what we're going to find. My experience tells me that there's nothing underneath that window, there's no brick there. That at one point, that window was large and went all the way to the sidewalk. And so it's been filled in and shortened. We don't have the ability to put a new window back in that size. Mostly because they've built, at some point in the history of the building, they've actually built a platform. And anybody who goes in their pizza knows that that building is actually raised up, the finished floor. So at some point, they've modified the building to a point where we can't really put a window to that floor anymore. He's replaced the window, I think, last year already. So even this picture is a little bit dated because this was pulled off of Google Earth. So underneath that window, we think we're going to find just framing. And more than likely, we're going to have to replace that. We'd like to replace it with brick, we don't know if we're going to have the budget. It depends on how bad the rest of the brick is. So he's kind of put in a hard stop at 30 grand, so when we get all of it torn down, then we'll know how much we can do. His desire is to have all of the old red brick done. But it doesn't look like we're probably going to have the budget for it, so we'll probably have to replace whatever is damaged. We know that some of the columns are damaged right now, we pulled out one piece. We know some of those are not damaged, so we're probably going to have to fix it and paint it. It's probably the end.
But then the area surrounding the window in the AC right now, that is brick.
The surrounding is, so there's a column here and here. And then this is all brick up here. But we know from digging around in the attic, there's actually a window up here right now. And so if you look at all the old buildings around town, my guess is that in this, that this used to have a window that went all the way, and then that window on top was just a transom light above it. So we think that this has been just filled in with framing. So if we have the budget, what we're going to do is we're going to replace this with brick. This window will probably get bricked in as well up top because now it is attic space. If we could salvage it, we would salvage it and put the awning right between them.
Right now, around that AC unit is wood.
Right here is wood.
There's wood siding.
Can you point to one of the, where's wood currently? Is it at the very top of the awning?
This is all, it's all got a wood face on it. So at some point in the history of the building, they've put furring strips and thrown siding on top of it. Probably because when they did this, when they infilled this, it was an easier fix than trying to fix all the brick. Also, the brick is damaged, like in this column, this piece has actually been removed already, and there's a bunch of damage on this column. So it was probably a, I'm guessing it was a cost savings at some point when they did it. So that's why we're a little bit, you know, we kind of have to head trip back just a little bit because he doesn't have an unlimited budget. And so when we pull it down, we're going to have to deal with what's there and kind of make some judgment calls on what we can, what we can do and what we can't do and get on the budget. I know that, I think, and I don't know if she talked to you about that, did Christina talk to you about the, an OCA grant? Okay, please. She was working on, on some of that because she, the idea was that whatever they could get done, we could pull apart, get it fixed, and then next year, they would apply for a grant to do, to do the rest of whatever we don't get done. So we.
Okay, I might ask it, come back up to the, it's okay, we just have some votes for a virtual, any other questions for that?
So if, if we don't have the budget to replace the brick below, what's the proposed material? We would probably do just a siding material, either a wood or concrete board or something to that effect. We think we're going to be fine getting under the window with filling it in with brick. And we think, we've got the budget, we think that demo it all, paint it all, put an awning in, put the brick under the window. One of the question marks was that the new front door, the new, the door might get, have to get postponed and just repainted. If not, if we don't, if we run out of budget, that was kind of our first cut on things, so the expectation is that we would be able to do right now that we can do everything that's on there within the, within the budget. Unless we run into some problems, just when you open up these old buildings, you just don't know. That's like, see about our house.
Adam, with our approval, does that give them, do they have to come back if they can't use the materials proposed? I may have leave that up to you.
I think there's a couple ways to know that. Either have us come back, if we can deviate, or we can trust it to Adam to approve and come back to us if he has restoration plans. I don't think you'd go to the BCA though.
No.
So we'd come here if Adam so thought that. I think if it's in line with the spirit of our tools and the products that are being utilized or within the overall district of all the materials, particularly that's something that would be helpful. But we have an option to be an escalation point. Any other questions for Matt? Also, I think of, is it Christina or was this the Christina that was, is the owner of the property?
Yes.
Anything else that you would like to offer for this?
I don't think so. I think Matt covered it all.
Good, thanks for being on. Do you have time in our agenda to hear from those who would like to speak against or ask questions about the project? Those participating virtually or in person? Okay, record reflect, we have none. We do also have time in our agenda for those who are in an official government capacity to speak or ask any questions. All right, record reflect, we have none. So we can return back to Adam to ask any of the final, final questions of him before asking for a motion. I just got one question. Can we revisit the signs? What, they're going to refurbish what's there or put new, or what's the?
My understanding, correct me if I'm wrong, but is it you're, you're just going to take the sign down in order to do the, to take the wood off?
Yeah.
And then you would reinstall the sign?
Yeah, the existing sign would be removed and then returned to its existing location, basically. We may have to adjust it slightly to account for the new awning.
So if we listen virtually, the sign would be removed for the project, installed and adjusted. All right, any other questions, Brad? Okay, perhaps we can entertain a motion, and in a motion, maybe we can think about how we want to handle any deviations from the existing. We make a motion to approve. If we have got, if they deviate too far from what we've seen here tonight, we'll link it up to Adam's judgment, probably bring that back to us, but deviates in a way that anything's. Okay, is there a second for that motion?
I said, that motion.
So enough for discussion? And just to clarify, if we deviate, we can deviate to some people's plans or from the overall district materials group. All right, let's all vote, all those in favor, any of you guys saying aye? Any opposed, any abstaining? Okay, well, thank you so much for participating. We will go on to agenda item number five, which is the public hearing for case number 21ARCH 2021, Fox Garden and VFW Architectural Review. Adam?
All right, so the next agenda item involves another architectural review case. This is for two projects, the Fox Garden and VFW, these are both part of our stellar communities award, and I'll explain a little bit more detail here momentarily. So in this case, the applicant, I guess, is headed to the town of Fourville, and we are seeking architectural approval for substantial front facade repairs to Fox Garden. That's one building. And then the VFW building, which is two buildings that they have, so the total of three buildings part of this request. So the projects are part of the town's stellar communities award and are funded by the projects owners. The Indiana Office of Community and Rural Affairs, also known as OCA, and the Towns Redevelopment Commission. The towns architect, the project architect is Pat Jacobs with Architecture Trio. Just to give you all, just a little bit of background on this particular item, the grant, it's a $250,000 grant. And so you can see how the funding is allocated, that construction on the VFW project was estimated to be about $135,003. And then Fox Garden project would be about $77,300. And then the remainder that would come out of the grant would be to pay the architect on the project. The redevelopment commission would put in somewhere in the neighborhood of about $53,000, it depends on what the occupancy number looks like. And then a total of about $5,000 is put in from the owners, when we on the project. So in terms of the scope on the Fox Garden project, and of course, I'll show you some renderings here momentarily, is they'd be doing masonry repointing, new windows, and new wall fixtures. The one item I just wanted to bring up is that an ADA ramp is being considered. However, ADA access could be provided from the rear of the building. And the review committee that took a look at the Main Street reconstruction project had not expressed support for ADA ramps all along the front of Main Street. And Ms. Jacobs is checking with her co-consultant to determine the requirements, and I spoke with her today about what that discussion was, and I'll, I'll bring everybody up to speed on that momentarily. But here, of course, is the well-known Fox Garden Restaurant. This is what the schematic, what the building looks like today. And then you can see the changes are fairly modest, especially in comparison to the VFW building, which I'll show momentarily. But obviously, very important changes to really accentuate the building. You can see that ramp that is shown at this time out in front of Fox Garden. So with that, moving on to the, let me, actually, let me close that out with the ADA discussion. So Ms. Jacobs had spoke with this, this co-consultant and said, in terms of ADA requirements, as long as the given portion of the building is not being altered, technically, you do not need to do any updates to ADA, you're not touching that particular part. So in this case, they're not, you know, raising or changing the extra layers or opening, so in theory, it would stay the same. I know the, it sounds like the owner has expressed some concern about simply wants to have access for ADA participants from the front of the building. But again, based on what that committee had to say, well, we would recommend on this, and Pat may be able to weigh in as well, because we revisit this issue, but what we recommend is having handrails at each of the front entrances, maybe a small sign or something inside the building that says, now watch your step, handrail, something to that effect, which will make it safer. And then have the full ADA access in the back of the building or the parking lot, that's right there. So that's one thing that we had been looking at. And before I move on to the VFW project, the one thing that I want to caveat with this is so as part of the stellar communities award, of course, the city of Greenfield received funding as well to do a number of buildings in their downtown area. And unfortunately, because of really the robust economy, but because of the pandemic pricing of things, and because of frankly, some inflation, the costs are coming back very high from the contractors, almost to the tune of three times as much as what was originally projected. So that is something that we are concerned about. And certainly, it's, it's, it's not really pertinent to an architectural review, but only from the standpoint of just if you're aware of that, that certain elements may need to be cut out of the project. There may need to be additional funding from the building owners and/or the RDC, we don't know yet, we don't know exactly what those numbers are. So we'll have to revisit those and look at it methodically and see what makes the most sense for all parties involved. On the VFW building, similar, similar scope, masonry repointing, new windows, new wall fixtures. In this case, as you know, the, the building had a lot of non-historic alterations that were done over the years. This one is truly a transformational project. You can see the historic windows were bricked in. It was a non-historically appropriate limestone veneer that was put on the first floor at some point. So this is reflected in the schematic drawings that Ms. Jacobs has put together. But you can see here what a transformation impact that this grant would have, and this project would have, would basically return both of those buildings to a historic, historically accurate footprint of that building to include really front facade windows, transom windows, filling in those little brick windows. So it's a, it's a, it's a pretty transformational impact. So going back to the architectural review, again, pretty straightforward, obviously, they're, they're utilizing an historic brick facade, that's of course an allowed material. And it's returning the buildings to, to an historic aesthetic, really in both situations. We hadn't received any letters of remonstrance in the community. And we'd recommend that you approve it subject to the scope of this submittal. That one condition, that the ADA access shall be provided in the rear of the Fox Garden building unless mandated by the local code to be in the front. So with that, if you have any, any questions, I'd be more than happy to address it.
It's Adam. Any questions, Brad? Is the concern with a, an encroachment at the right of way or a sidewalk or what? Is why does staff recommend?
Yes, that's the, that's the concern is, now first and foremost, we obviously believe that ADA is extremely important and required item. And in this particular case, yes, that was really the concern that's been raised by by staff, is that it would cut down too much of the usable sidewalk width. I believe the sidewalk was wide, it's a, I want to say a level, something in that range. And so unfortunately, by having this ramp in front, it would really cut down on the amount of usable space for the rest of the pedestrian, or frankly, for any other individual who may need ADA access on the sidewalk. So that was the process.
Must be left over, you know?
I think it would probably be
Six, six, five and a half, six or seven.
Five or six.
And are there any tree planters?
There are, there are some. Maybe street furniture, there may be lights as well.
Where's the closest city or response from the mainstream design?
Um.
The right front is it?
Out in front, I'm told. By knowledgeable sources.
A couple of questions for me. What does jointly mean when the building owners are sharing?
Well, I should, yeah, let me, that's a good question, I'm going to clarify. So jointly in terms of the, there's going to be one contractor that's going to do the work on both buildings. And the funding is coming out of the same pool. It was taken out of this same grand pool. But in terms of what the owners are putting in, they put in $500 each for this.
What, are we going to have a separate agreement with the owners to agree upon pricing?
We do, as part of the OCA requirements, we do have a there's, there's actually an easement that's granted across the front of the building, which, as I recall, will prohibit the building owner from making any changes after this is done for seven years. So it's not to ensure that that government funded those repairs are not altered. And there's also, there's also, as part of that agreement, it talks about liability, things of that nature. So that's all covered as far as, trust me, OCA has, it's actually, OCA's requirements come from the community development block grant funding, CBDDG, which is really federal fund bank that's passed through to OCA, so.
A lot of good authority to draft that stuff.
Yeah, so there's, there's.
Distribution of the cost, especially if we're projecting an increased cost. What is the equivalent for the share there? Is it two-thirds? Because it could go into one?
Well, so it was based on, when this was put together last year, it was based on a consultation with the owners to find out ideally what's the scope of work that they'd like to accomplish as part of this. Which, by the way, we had opened up the grant opportunity to anybody on, on Main Street, and these were the projects that came to fruition. So it was basically, this is what we'd like to do, and then we'd have to pay the architect. um, we'd have to pay the architect as part of it as well. So let's factor that in. So to answer your question, I think it's cross escalate. Um, I don't want to predict just yet as to how that would be resolved. We don't know how, how bad that number could be. And we don't know, uh, what might need to be.
But is it something that's in agreement and that there's a protocol for gathering?
Yeah.
Consultation.
A- absolutely. And we would, we would go back to the business owners. I know that, um, Pat Jacobs would really be the point person on that and say, well, if you're going to still do, there's what we might not be able to do. Um, so it'll be interesting to see what those numbers come out to be.
Any other questions for Adam?
Is there on the, the VFW site, is there a vertical discontinuity in the building or is it?
You know, I, I would, um, defer to either Pat or, uh, the business owner.
It's accessible from either, the, either side, either end of it.
It's flush.
It's flush.
Okay. There's a ramp up.
Okay.
It's, it's a slight slope.
Okay.
Okay.
Yeah.
What is the genesis of the, the ADA ramp, uh, for Fox Garden?
I think the, um, I think the genesis came from a request by the, the property owner, if I'm not mistaken.
Okay.
Just to, you know, improve that ability for your patrons to get in. So it's very understandable. Yeah, sure.
Okay. Well, we do have, uh, we'll, we'll get back to you again, Adam. We have time in our agenda for those who are, um, speaking on behalf of either Fox Garden or the VFW. Let's start with Fox Garden. Anybody like to offer any comments or your, um, statements?
I got a question.
Uh, um, are you a member of the petitioner?
Oh, no.
Okay, I'll, I'll get to this.
Okay.
All right. Um, Pat, anything you want to say on the Fox Garden project?
The only thing I'd like to add, um, again, Pat Jacobs with Architecture Trio, the, the architect working on this project. Um, the, the idea or concept of the handicap ramp at the, uh, Fox Garden Restaurant was primarily, um, again, at the request of the building owner. Uh, one of the major concerns that they have is there's no platform when you come out of that building. So what, you open the, the door directly out into the street and step down, which is somewhat of a tripping hazard. Um, and they've had issues. If you've ever noticed, they have caution tape on the steps currently. Um, so what we were trying to do is mitigate that situation, someone coming out. They would have a platform to step onto and then step down. So that was the original design concept for the ramp. Um, I did speak with our co-consultant just to get some verification and clarification. Um, there is an opportunity to provide ADA accessibility at the rear of the building, um, even for the, the left-hand side, which is, is newly opened. Um, and so what we had begun, or what I mentioned to Adam, and he brought up to this evening is, uh, maybe we look at the installation of, um, handrails on either side at those doors to provide a level of safety coming down and also to serve as a, a kind of visual cue that there's a step down. Um, and then also to include signage of some sort that says caution, step up, caution, step down and put, um, tape on the, the stairs to again indicate cautionary, um, action. So, uh, those are things that we've, we're investigating regarding the, the Fox Garden and the ramp. Um, I think the latter solution that we, I just mentioned, might, might serve the, the public as they go in and out of the building sufficiently.
Any questions for that?
Yeah, I have a question. Is, is there an opportunity on this that you, that the, the door or the entrance, the vestibule be dropped at the sidewalk level and then once you're inside the building, then step up into the dining area? Is, is there an opportunity to do that or is it even feasible?
That it may be feasible, but we might be creating just as much of a problem by doing that. Uh, currently there's a slight slope as you go into that vestibule in turn to go into the restaurant. Um, if we set that down at the level of the, um, sidewalk, we'd have to probably do some interior framing alterations to drop the floor because that floor is truly up higher than considerably up higher than sidewalk. So we'd have to, and then we'd have to make the transition. So then you'd be needless to say, we haven't looked at that as a solution. We were, because we'd be getting into interior alterations, which we try not to do with facade projects. Does that make sense?
Yes. Thank you.
Any other questions for Pat? Jake, would you want to, um, come up with just a plan on this? Handrail thing? Yeah. Just, uh, state your name for the record and, um, don't mind if you ask about this handrail thing.
Jake, we're just, you know, let's go.
Please let us know about, uh, how, how do you look handrails?
It was just something I thought could help. Um, I said it, draw it, and draw it with the ramp and draw it without the ramp. Um, if you guys would approve it, I thought it'd be cool. You know, they don't have a lot of issues. I just thought it would be something to say, hey, I mean, this sidewalk's getting redone. I figured two or one stone kind of deal. So it was just an option. It doesn't work, doesn't work. It hasn't worked this long, so I'm not really too concerned about it, you know?
Thank you. All right. Any other items on the, uh, Fox Garden before the VFW? All right, so the VFW. Um, anybody who is, um, representing the VFW, want to, um, speak to a time in our agenda for them? Okay. Um, any questions for Pat on the VFW? You have no around here, Pat, for now. All right. Do we have time on our agenda for those who want to ask clarifications or questions? Matt, this might be you.
I was just curious if we ever, if they considered a full width sidewalk ramp over to bring that up. I've seen that done in a couple of locations where we did a full like eight foot wide. Ramp on one side, flat across the doors, ramp down the other side. So the entire deal sidewalk becomes a ADA compliance base? Yeah.
I think that's a correct.
Um, so Pat, the question presented would be, was there considered a full length sidewalk, um, elevation with, with maybe some, um, handicap accessibility on ramps on each end?
We were trying to, try, uh, originally not being part of the, the Main Street, um, sidewalk improvements. Uh, we were trying to minimize the amount of sidewalk work that would have to be done as part of the public right of way. If, I mean, if you'd like, so what we were trying so no, we did not look at taking out that entire section of sidewalk and, and ramping up and ramping down. Um, we just, we just looked at what that situation would look like immediately in front of the building to meet the requirements. The problem is also it's really hard to meet current code with making the improvements because we're, right now, we, we've kind of looked at a new design option. And we're talking about 44 inches out from the face of the building. If we do the kind of thing that you're talking about, at minimum, we'd be out 60 inches from the face of the building. But if I am hearing you correctly, you're thinking maybe the full width of the sidewalk? Did I understand the question correct, correctly?
Would be the 11 foot of the sidewalk then?
Yeah, we've done in the past where we ran basically the full width and then there was a small, short railing, but just adjacent to the curb to give a little bumper space, but then the, you know, with the everybody on the sidewalk, we have to walk over the top of the ramp.
Yeah. And it would be.
How are they?
Okay, so that was, any other, any other comments or remonstrance or questions? All right. Anybody from the government would like to, um, have any comments or questions? All right. If we have none, so we can ask any other additional clarifications of Adam. Uh, Adam, do we need to solve this ADA thing if we kind of we leave it to, does, does this need to be a, a part of our, if it happens, it happens and you guys can kind of work it out or tell me what we need to do?
I'll leave that up to you. If you're okay with just, uh, leaving it up to Joe, myself and Pat working with the applicant to come up with a good plan. Then that's fine.
Right. Any other questions for Pat?
Is there any concern about if, if, let's say it's included in this project that we, we go down a slippery slope of now, if it's included here, we now need to consider it every one of these because a bunch of them do have a vertical discontinuity at the face of the building. And so anytime there's something like, uh, we've set a precedent essentially.
Yeah, what I could add is, uh, that was exactly the, um, I think the main concern.
Okay.
That's how we had. And, and that frankly, the stakeholders on the Main Street reconstruction project had at the time, there are many doorways that have this problem. So.
Or they may require, you know, recessed opening, but a lot of ways it's naked.
Yeah, right.
But, but the less you interfere, um, sometimes the better. Especially you have a we have questions or comments? Okay, uh, we have staff recommendation, uh, for this matter up on the board and if anybody would like to make a motion, enter.
I'd like a motion to approve, um, case number zero two, A R C H twenty twenty one, Fox Garden, the, the architectural with, including the staff, staff recommendation, uh, about the ADA compliance ramp. And leaving that to them.
Just for clarification, include a ramp or handrails or full length?
Correct.
Bridge, okay. Anybody willing to send me that?
I'll second that.
Any other discussion? All right. Uh, let's call for a vote. All those in here, if you can keep this hang on. Aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstaining? Well, that'll carry on. We can head now to our four comments, agenda item number six. Any more comments? Seeing none, we can take a motion for adjournment. Thank you so much. A second. If you were quick on that side of the board, all those in favor? Indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Good to see y'all.